Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Mr. Corangelo.
Present.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mr. Cummings.
Here.
Ms. Gwos. Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Lacks.
Here. We have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the East Brunswick Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News Tribune, excuse me, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is a policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening, my diehard friends. All two of you. I am going to entertain a motion for a closed session, whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session. The Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. Whereas the length of closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action will be taken. No. I guess I know what's coming. I believe it was mentioned by Mrs. Becker and Mr. Corangelo. Is there any discussion? Who else wants to jump in? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you so much. We'll be back in about an hour. Welcome back. I see the bride's side has overtaken the grooms tonight. But that's okay. We're all in this together. Dr. Valeski, would you like to kick things off for us with your superintendent's report?
Absolutely, President Lacks. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see you. The artwork on display in the boardroom this evening was created by students from Frost Elementary School. The art teacher of these talented students is Julia Komisinski. Dr. Nyree Delgado is the principal. The high school counseling department hosted a well-attended and informative senior parent night on Thursday, September 28th. Parents were guided through the exciting and challenging college application process in smaller breakout sessions with our counselors. As a parent who's looking forward to college one more time for my son, I don't consider this exciting. Topics reviewed including completing the Common Application, changes in the SAT/ACT, test optional policies, new admission trends, and financial aid opportunities. While each senior will also meet one-on-one with their counselor for individual guidance, the evening provided an opportunity for parents to stay informed and supported throughout the college application process. Churchill Junior High School and the high school hosted their annual Sources of Strength Student Trainings in September. The Sources of Strength program is an evidence-based suicide prevention plan that connects trained student leaders with positive adult role models to spread messages of hope, help, and strength throughout the school buildings. During the training session, students participated in team-building activities and games while they were also trained to detect when friends might be struggling with their mental health and how to connect them with adult support. And that is absolutely an important program in our schools. Students also planned school-wide climate initiatives, including a violence prevention campaign, breast cancer fundraiser, and a positive affirmation of messages to share in the counseling department. On Thursday, October 5th, I had the pleasure of presenting to Rachel Moran's Developing Student Leaders class at the high school. Their discussion of leadership preparedness led to an insightful question-and-answer session. At Irwin Elementary School, the fourth-grade students created projects for their at-home reading celebrations, where students designed their own project to highlight part of their independent reading book. Warnstopper third-grade classes had a book tasting café. Candlelight, and that was not real candles, by the way, and mood music set the café tone. Students read around the room, tasting the first chapter of a variety of books found in their classroom library. Each student used a menu to jot down the titles of books that they wanted to read during the reading workshop, and the activity encourages students to explore different genres and extends the joy of reading. Chittick Elementary School participated in numerous fun-filled days for the Week of Respect, showcasing in many ways we can all show respect to others and ourselves. Classrooms were buzzing with positive messages and conversations regarding being self-aware, showing kindness, respecting opinions, and the important concept of teamwork. In the month of October, each of our community-based elementary schools, in partnership with Keep Middlesex Moving, is hosting a Walk to School Day. The goal is to teach children in Middlesex County the importance of walking safely and the benefits of walking as a means to get to places, exercise, and also to help the environment. On this evening's agenda is a resolution or proclamation for National Principals Month, and I'm proud to recognize the critical instructional leadership of our principals and secondary assistant principals. We appreciate their dedication and commitment to the students and the community of East Brunswick. Also on this evening's agenda is a resolution or proclamation for Fire Prevention Week, which is October 8th through the 14th. Cooking Safety Starts With You. Pay attention to fire prevention as the official theme for Fire Prevention Week, and we are grateful to the Fire Marshals Jason Whalen and Sean Birdy, and the Fire Prevention Bureau, and all the volunteer firefighters who serve the East Brunswick community, as well as the representatives that are here tonight to receive that proclamation. The GMC Sportsmanship Summit was held at the Woodbridge Community Center this morning. The summit included two student athletes from each of our fall athletic teams. There were over 300 student athletes in attendance from various schools around the GMC. Our own coach Kevin Brady was a guest speaker in the girls' soccer breakout room, and our own coach Jeff Sundberg was a guest speaker in the boys' cross-country breakout room. Our senior Caitlin Gay is East Brunswick Public Schools representative for the Student-Athlete Ambassador Council, and Caitlin is a standout basketball and softball player. Congratulations to our September High School Athletes of the Month. Students were selected for this honor by the coaching staff based on performance, demonstration of leadership, effort in practice, and of course, for modeling exceptional character. Parent-teacher conferences will take place on Tuesday, October 24th through Friday, October 27th. These are single-session days with lunch served for grades K through six. Just a reminder, on Sunday, November 19th, the East Brunswick Education Foundation will be hosting their inaugural 5K walk-run bear crawl and kids' fun run. Get in those steps while meeting new neighbors, supporting school spirit, and helping to fund grants across the district. Please visit our website, ebnet.org, for registration information. For the foreseeable future, part of my superintendent report will be dedicated to updates on our high school planning. In that vein, we are still in the planning stage. We are still collecting information and refining projections. On Tuesday, November 28th, we will host a community forum at East Brunswick High School from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., and that night, I will share our district planning that will cover, among many things, why do we need a new or renovated high school? How will we continue to inform all community stakeholders? When could a referendum vote on the high school be scheduled? And what happens after a referendum vote? And what is the financial impact for community members? That night, community members may tour the high school, and most importantly, attendees will be able to provide comments and feedback on elements they would like to see in a newly designed high school. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. That was quite the report. I like the fact that you went around the district, because you love the different schools.
I applaud Karen and Janet. They are collecting information from all the schools, and we're trying to give you a really good snapshot of everything going on.
I really like that, especially since tonight, there's no learning across the district. You know how I feel about my little ones. But you did, as my runner-up, because if I don't love the learning across the district, the other thing I do love is the proclamations of recommendations, excuse me, resolutions of appreciation and commendation. So that's what we're up to, for my friends in the front, and some of my friends I see farther back. So I am going to read the first resolution, whereas according to the National Fire Protection Association, Cooking Safety Starts With You. Pay attention to fire prevention as official theme for Fire Prevention Week, October 8th through 14th, 2023, promotes potentially lifesaving measures that can mean the difference between life and death in a fire. Developing a home escape plan with all members of the household and practicing it regularly ensures that everyone knows what to do when the smoke alarm sounds and uses the time wisely. And whereas East Brunswick's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our town, including our educational community, the East Brunswick Public Schools welcomes East Brunswick's fire and emergency services personnel into our schools to educate our students. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes October 8th through 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week, and encourages all the people of East Brunswick to heed the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Week 2023, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of East Brunswick's fire and emergency services. And be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education appreciates the efforts of East Brunswick's fire and emergency services personnel to make our community a safe place in which to live. May I have that motion, please? Mr. Corangelo, Mrs. Becker, is there any discussion?
Sure. I think, I don't know how many towns are still volunteer, but being born and raised here, being in the police department for 26 years, I was always impressed that the amount of people that volunteer their time would show up, not only for fires, accident scenes, fire prevention in the schools. So to me, you know, first responders obviously are excellent volunteer first responders, a little notch up in my book. I mean, it's putting yourself out there, it's risking yourself, and to me, it's very admirable. So I'm proud of East Brunswick township and, you know, everybody in the fire prevention and fire districts in our town. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sizmar. We have to do, actually, before we vote, I'm going to just piggyback on that and say one other thing. We all know as adults how important you are, but one of the things that I love, and we talked about this here, going into the schools, you're not only teaching the kids very important things that they're learning at a young age, but you're the experts, and they'll listen to you more so than they'll listen to the parents. So I appreciate that as a parent, because my kids used to come home from elementary school and tell me what they learned. It didn't matter how many times I told them the same thing. When you said it, they actually listened to that. So thank you for that. May I please have all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Absentions? Motion carries. I'm going to meet you out front.
I'm going the other way.
All right, you stay down there. I'm going this way. Well orchestrated.
I'll keep it brief. Real quick, I would like to thank the Board of Ed for allowing us to come to the schools and speak to all the kids. Tomorrow, we'll be finishing up with Bowan Monroe. We've had a really successful week. I see some familiar faces, and here are some principals that we've seen. Everything's been going really well. We've had a great time. Kids are loving it. They love the video. They love seeing us dress up. So once again, thank you for allowing us to come and do this, and we hope to continue it every year. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Where schools inspire the next generation of professionals, political leaders, artists, educators, and others who contribute to a healthy and prosperous society, and whereas principals and assistant principals are responsible for providing instructional leadership and professional management in our schools, whereas principals and assistant principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers to develop and maintain high curriculum standards, set performance goals and objectives, and ensure high-quality instruction, and whereas school principals and assistant principals are responsible for the safety of their students and staff and the security of the school, and whereas principals and assistant principals are key to implementing state and federal education reforms in New Jersey, and whereas the month of October 2023 has been declared National Principals Month and is dedicated to recognizing the significant contributions of our nation's principals and assistant principals and the enthusiasm they have for providing quality educational experiences and guidance to their students, and whereas the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and appreciates the skills, dedication, and commitment of its principals and assistant principals and the challenges they face daily, now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commands its principals and assistant principals for their continued service to our children. May I please have a motion for that?
Mrs. Becker, Mrs. Reese, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings? Oh, sorry. He was...
I just want to echo, I mean, there's so much in this resolution and proclamation that speaks to the unique role that all of you serve in supporting the well-being of each of our kids in this district, supporting your staff, and, you know, maintaining that cohesive team that is required to pull this off. And I think this does a really lovely job. I think there's probably so much more on top of all of this that you all do that is just so inspirational and inspiring, and I just wanted to thank you all for your service to the community. As a father with three kids in three different schools, I get to, you know, be on the other end of that, the receiving end, and it's not an easy job, but you guys do it with great grace and bring so many gifts and skills to the community. So thank you.
Echoing on what Tim said, we talk about what a complicated world this has become. So when we talk about people who are responsible for providing leadership and responsible for safety, it's very complicated, and I think we are blessed to have a group of principals and assistant principals who know when it's time to just listen, who know when it's time to have a tough conversation, know when it's time to be empathetic and provide that virtual shoulder to cry on, but who understands that every single staff member and student in their building is completely different and has their own story. And quite honestly, I don't know how you all do it, but I admire you so much, and thank you so much for the safety, dedication, leadership, educational inspiration that you bring to our students, staff, and yes, us parents too, every single day. Thank you.
Mr. Hong.
See, I fully agree with Mr. Cummings and Ms. Becker's statement. Before I make further comments, I believe we should have a national superintendent's month to order you and Lou and Bernie. So you guys are the leader of this community. Okay. So we have about 84 hundred students. When the student and their parents have problems, whom are they going to call? Sometime, Dr. Valeski, most of the time, very likely, it's you guys sitting there. So the impression you guys give in those parents, their family, reflect the impression to this community. So all you guys, you know, is the building block, is cornerstone of East Brunswick Public School and the East Brunswick community. There's no one can prove my appreciation as parent of three children attending East Brunswick Public School. I know I can trust you guys. I can send my children to the school if they're in your hands. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Reese.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you as well. You're the backbone of...
Oh, thank you. You're the backbone of our district. You make our school special, and like my fellow board members said, we feel safe knowing that you're in charge. And, you know, it's been a very challenging few years, to say the least, and you've made it look like a seamless operation, and I know that it's, we all know that all the hours that you put in, that we don't see. So we just thank you very much for all that you do every day.
Mr. Corangelo.
Just watching you guys out here, look at the level of character that they have. It's just a marvel to see the type of professionalism and character. I just look at you all and just like, I marvel at you guys. So, and my daughter's a senior in high school, so she's been through it. We have a principal that's up here too, back in the day, so I honor you too, but I'd like to say thank you as well.
Mrs. Gwos.
I just wanted to say, I'm listening to my fellow board members talk about parents, and as an educator, I'm aware that most principals don't actually ever go home. I do believe that you live in those schools, and I'm real sorry about that, but also grateful. So thank you. And again, sorry. But I also think, from the educator's side, things have been really difficult for teachers for the past few years. Everything has just become, for a positive word, more complicated, and the people that are holding all of those educators up are the principals. They really are. You are the buffer that makes it a safe place for staff, and you are very, very often taking the brunt of things. But I'm looking out on this crowd, and I'm realizing, just staring at faces, that I have heard recently, I mean, I have three children, one who just graduated and two more that are still in the schools, but I'm looking at faces. I see four different people that I've talked to children about, kids who told me that their principal made them feel special. And one of them was in a restaurant, and I hadn't asked, so just walked right up to talk about. But it's amazing, in such a complicated job with such long hours and so many responsibilities, that you do make the time for children to feel seen and special, which is, you know, the heart of the job, but it doesn't seem to ever come last despite all the responsibilities. So thank you.
Mr. Winston.
So I'm sitting here listening to all this, which I agree with, and then I'm counting how many assistant principals and principals, because I have five kids. So I'm trying to think, like, how many have I actually encountered, and under what circumstances, based on the personality of all those kids? Right now, I'm at 15, but I'm going to go home and work on this, because it's that important. You know, and I think the thing that stands out, I mean, I got two left to get through, the 16-year-olds, and, you know, I appreciate the anxiety they may cause in some classrooms or schools for that matter. But that being said, I think the one thing that comes back to me from my kids, as each of them have stumbled into your offices for one reason or another throughout the years, is the human quality, I think, the connection that I noticed to the staff, and mostly being present. And I think that's what separates, you know, in all of my years of being exposed, my father was an administrator, and being exposed to this over the years, I think if anything I took away from his actions as compared to what I've seen in the similarities with yours, is the presence and comfort. In my day, Mr. Amatucci at Warnstopper, that was a scary office. You didn't want to go in there. That was bad. You didn't go in there to share ideas. And that's not the case, though, with this group and collectively the whole group. So my simple comments, my last two words, just thank you. I think you get it, and I think you're what makes this district what it is. A large part of it is culture and attitude, and I think you bring both. So thanks a lot.
You're very right, Mr. Winston, but you left one thing out. You got just about where you should be, but one thing I will add on to what you said is, not only are your offices not scary places, but the kids love you. I say it year after year, that's my favorite part. Everything's been said here is right on, but what Jeff said is so true. The principal's office is not the principal's office from when we went to school. These kids want to be there. They want to have lunch with you. They want to see you. They want to say hi in the hallway, and that is just something that is so special and makes you really stand out, so.
They don't want to have lunch with Mr. Hannis.
They don't want to have lunch with Mr. Hannis? Okay, well, all right. So I will say that that generally, the younger principals, the younger kids, I will say that that is going to be a little bit more for Mr. Hannis.
I think Dr. Valeski's wrong.
Oh, yeah.
They do love him.
That's not lunch.
That's not lunch. No, it truly is more at the elementary levels. But Mr. Hannis, I would bet that there are kids in your school that would love to have lunch with you.
There are. I'm kidding.
Yes. They don't want to have lunch with him.
No, no, they don't want to have lunch with him.
All right. May I please have all those in favor? Thank you so much. I know we have a few of you here tonight, so.
Kristin Christina is principal of Bowan Monroe Elementary School.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Nyree. Joanne Schmelowitz is principal of Irwin Elementary School. Thanks, Tatiana. Nyree Delgado is principal of Frost Elementary School.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Nyree. Joanne Schmelowitz is principal of Irwin Elementary School. Thanks.
Thanks, Dr. V.
Rachel Weitzencorn is acting principal at Lawrence Brook Elementary School.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Cheryl Jones is principal at Memorial Elementary School.
Oh, boy, she's famous.
Ross Petronko is principal at Hammershold Upper Elementary School. Inak Naimiche is assistant principal at Hammershold Upper Elementary School. The always-lovable Matt Hannis is principal at Churchill Elementary School.
Available for lunch, Carol. Thank you.
Jennifer Cunningham is assistant principal at Churchill Elementary School.
Thank you all, and thank you to those who couldn't be here this evening. Oh, we're picturing.
Yeah, picture. Can see nobody has their picture in the air.
Last one over here has to have lunch with Matt. Just kidding. She's like, "I'll do it."
As you know, my name is Joanne Schmelowitz, the proud principal of Irwin Elementary School and the president of the East Brunswick Principal and Supervisors Association, and on behalf of the East Brunswick PSA and the board members, we'd like to say thank you for your recognition tonight, and especially the heartfelt remarks of the board. And I did want to say, in response to what Mr. Winston said, we have the portrait of Mrs. Irwin up at Irwin School, and I can tell you, she is the scariest thing at Irwin School, by far. We use her sort of like the Haunted Mansion posters, because her eyes sort of move as she goes across. So she is the best leverage of anything I've ever had, for sure. Every day, EBPSA's 19 principals and assistant principals ensure that East Brunswick's children and its amazing instructional and sports support staff thrive in an environment that promotes personal growth, supports best practices, and enhances equitable access to learning. We ourselves are also leader learners, looking to continuously improve our own practice while ensuring a safe and welcoming environment for all 11 of our schools. Our membership, which includes the district supervisors, works closely together to ensure that every aspect of our schools are in harmony and aligned with our common goals. We take this responsibility seriously, and we strive to treat East Brunswick's children as our own. Being a principal in this district is the best job I've ever had, and it's a privilege for all of us. Thank you again for your proclamation. Thank you again for your proclamation and for your continuous support of us. Thank you.
So if I could, I was, the board all spoke very, very eloquently, and I just wanted to keep it very short, very simple. Every success we have in this district, every success that we enjoy, is because of you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I think the other messages don't have your picture posted on any school.
I want to go see that picture. I've never seen that picture.
It is scary.
I know, that's funny.
Yeah, it's scary.
All right, we're gonna have to do tours. Right after we have lunch with Mr. Hannis. We'll have lunch under the picture. Little picnic outing. Okay, see? Who says board meetings can't be fun? All right, so now we're moving on to the public hearing on the school-level self-assessment for determining grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act for the period ending June 30th, 2023.
Thank you, President Lacks, and good evening, everyone. The Commissioner of Education developed a program to grade each public school and school district's efforts to implement the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act, or the ABBR. This time period was from July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2023. A rubric was developed by the Department of Education, and each school was asked to self-assess their school's implementation of the ABBR. The self-assessment consists of eight core elements: HIB programs and approaches, training, additional staff instructional and training programs, curriculum and instruction on HIB-related information, HIB personnel, school HIB reporting procedures, HIB investigation procedures, and HIB reporting. The process is as follows. It is required that this self-assessment be made available for public comment. The self-assessment results must be approved by the Board of Education and submitted to the state by October 31st, 2023. The school district's grade will be the average of the grades of each school in the district, and each school's safety team was charged with assigning ratings based on their criteria and available documentation supporting each score. In terms of posting of scores, the Department of Education will post all school and school district's scores on the New Jersey Department of Education homeroom page. Each school must post the grade received and the district's score on their school's webpage. The school district must post the district grade, which is the average of all the school's self-assessment scores, on the district's homepage. The scoring. A point value was assigned to each indicator, does not meet requirements with zero points, partially meets requirements, one point, meets all requirements, two points, and exceeds the requirements, three points. Some important notes. The focus for the 2022-2023 school year, which this report is about, was additional training for bully prevention climate committee and additional training for community programs, morning and aftercare. In order to address these, multiple trainings were arranged, including anti-bullying specialists' facilitated summer professional development for the safety and climate teams to plan year-long activities to address culture and climate in schools. And a training program was developed by the anti-bullying specialists for community programs as well. Based on the 22-23 HIB self-assessment, we did earn a perfect score. For this school year, we will continue to have our school safety and climate teams meet to focus on building school climate through activities, as well as mindfulness strategies, health, and wellness. In addition, we'll work to provide more training for lunch and recess aides to help conflicts that may occur during those times. Our focus is counseling and social-emotional health, rather than discipline. All of our schools and the district met all requirements for the 2022-23 school year. The district total average for the 2022-23 school year was 78, which is considered a perfect score. I'd like to take a moment, just to let everyone know, we will continue to work to help develop the whole child. I want to also thank Dr. Valeski and the Board of Education for allowing us to partner with Effective School Solutions, or ESS. ESS provides therapeutic intervention for at-risk students in our district. ESS provides therapy utilizing curriculums in anger management, substance abuse, bereavement, when applicable. ESS also provides monthly parent support and professional development for staff. This year, we've increased our support through ESS by providing push-in in our ERI program at the elementary schools, and we have also added tier-three supports at Churchill and at the high school. So once again, I want to thank Dr. Valeski and the Board of Education for all of your support in all that we do, in student services, and in helping us to continue in the way we are moving, in the direction we're moving. And I'll take any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Figaro. And this is also for the public as well, correct?
To comment only on this.
Yep. Any board members have any questions?
We do comments?
You can, I believe.
Yeah, I've talked about this before, especially when you mentioned the ESS and some of the mental health programs. I remember Mr. Winston bringing it up pretty early on, prior to the pandemic, prior to all these things. You know, mental health in the school seems to be a recent word of what's going on out there. East Brunswick was always ahead of it, and I compliment administration, you know, everybody involved in that. It seems a lot of the things that we get from administration in this district, you know, they always say, well, thanks to the board. Well, I'll be the first to admit, you know, a lot of the ideas come from our administration. They have foresight on things that we don't even see coming. And, yeah, we're supportive, and, you know, we, I can always speak for me, but I think as a group, we are supportive, because over and over again, our administration has asked for things that all of a sudden, we realize, in the not-too-distant future, we need that. And I don't know how sometimes they foresee problems like stuff, like, nobody saw the pandemic coming, nobody saw the one-on-one devices. You know, we had one-on-one devices in the district, because administration came to us and asked us, there's a lot of money, security. We are the preeminent, you know, security district in the state and probably in the country, because years ago, administration came to us and said, can we have this? And they're all high-price tag items, but I'll tell you what, worth every penny, worth every penny. So, you know, all this is combined, you know? Why 78's a perfect score? I don't know, state of New Jersey, maybe? But, you know, where they picked that number from. But again, it just shows the team that we have in administration on down, you know, and everybody in the schools. You know, we honored the principals tonight, we honored teachers and all the other union members at different meetings. It's impressive. It's impressive. And I know, you know, the price tag, at the end of the day, sometimes you go, but I've yet to see something, big ticket, they've asked for, that we haven't needed and has made our children better in this district. So, that's what I have to say on the public portion of that report. So, thank you, everybody.
Mrs. Becker.
Mark, I think you made a lot of great points, and I also want to thank the administration, the current one, for having the foresight to provide us with the tools we need to provide safety, physical safety, mentally. But you said something very important, Mark. This is not the mental well-being and social-emotional well-being of our students, is not something that just came up with the pandemic. One of the first conversations I can remember having at a board meeting in 2000 was about, how can we communicate better with our parents to help our children socially and emotionally? And it went on for quite a few board meetings, which is why I remembered it. I'd just gotten on the board, and I thought this was great. I thought this was just about academics, but it wasn't. It was always about the whole child. And we just built on it, year after year. And I also, you and your staff do an outstanding job carrying, implementing all the things. And I think as a board, we're really proud and happy that we can provide you with the tools for this incredibly necessary piece.
So I am going to open this up for public comment. I'm just gonna let you know, for the members of the public, right after this is for the good of the cause for the public, where you can speak on anything you want. But at this point, I'm going to invite anyone that would like to speak on only this subject. Is there anyone that would like to speak only to what Dr. Figaro reported on? Okay. And seeing none, I'm going to close it. And now, that will lead us to the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. You will have three minutes to speak to the board. I always like to remind you, this is your time to speak to us. Please do not take our silence up here as not caring about the issues. Anything that needs further follow-up, the two women in the second row will be happy to take your name and information and get back to you with any follow-up necessary. That being said, is there anyone wishing to speak to the board this evening? If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Adam Walton, 3 Burlington Lane. So this is not easy for me. I actually respect all of you. I've gotten to know many of you very well, and I have the most admiration for you guys, the dedication, the commitment that you guys put into the community. And typically, it's not hard for me to speak, but this situation is, I do feel that there has been a failure by the leadership and by the administration. And I've had many people reach out to me, and I usually don't read things, but that being said, I feel there's a lack of empathy, leadership, and strength by the Board of Ed of leadership and the administration. I fully understand that some believe there are two sides of story, and I understand the innocent people on both sides. What I don't understand is why this administration has remained silent on condemning outright violence and hate speech within the population, among the students on social media. Instead, the students have had four days to stew with their own thoughts, with no simple message of being kind to your neighbors. There's been no response about the safety of the students and the teachers. As someone who has visited concentration camps and seen the rooms, the shoes, the ashes, and everything that comes with it, I find it deplorable that nothing was addressed, even a simple reminder of cyberbullying not being acceptable, or treating other fellow community members with respect. The truth is, we do not focus on inclusiveness enough. As you all probably know, 6 million have died. However, that's not the true story. 11 million people actually died. Everyone from Jews, everyone from Jews, Romanians, all passed, as well as those that were handicapped. If we're going to include everyone, we need to make sure that we are including everyone. Inclusivity needs to be everyone, not just chosen when convenient. If you want to teach inclusion and acceptance, it must include everyone and do not be afraid to discuss possibly controversial topics. Since this has happened in the last couple of days, I've had many parents knowing that I'm running for the Board of Ed. I've spoken to any, I've spoken to other Board of Ed members as well that are here that have expressed concerns, and I've brought that to them as well. There's parents that legitimately are scared out there. Whether it's right or not, they're legitimately scared, because they do feel that there's an imminent threat, and it has not been addressed. I've always been very impressed by Dr. Valeski and the way he's addressed COVID, the way he's addressed everything under the sun. But I do feel in this case, it should have been out in front, because it would have eased a lot of people. And many of you will tell me, many of you may know, again, it's hard for me, I usually don't have any trouble speaking. And I talk to clients, I do seminars, I do that all the time, but this is one thing that I think we did fail at. So, again, I do thank you. I know it's not easy. I know it's not something that you guys take likely, but I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board this evening? If you could come up, just state your name and address for the record, please. Oh. You're a gentleman.
Yeah, Darkona 3 Robin. First, I'd like to start off by saying, as a resident, I really applaud you. I know you get it from the board here, and I appreciate that, but I know you get it from the board, but I'd like to congratulate all of you for the excellent job that you do. And Dr. Valeski was absolutely right. Our success is really based on you. I would also like to appreciate the board. November 28th, I think it's gonna be a great event. I would encourage the board to put across any and all options with regards to the issues that are, you know, whether it's the remodel, whether it's new construction, whatever options there are, I wish you guys bring it all to the forefront, and I'm sure you will. Kind of echoing what Adam said, I would encourage the board to kind of get out in front of some of this stuff. I don't know if you're aware, but there is a lot of banter going on on Facebook tonight. There are a lot of parents who are concerned. And the mayor's already made a statement, the police chief has already made a statement. The pride and joy of East Brunswick is our kids and our school district. That is very obvious. So I would encourage the board to say something about it. It would really put everyone else at ease a little bit more. We know you guys do a terrific job. We expect nothing but the best. You guys have a very capable person on your board, who was an officer, and Dr. Magistro did a lot to getting us to a point where we have a very, very good, safe and secure district. I have absolutely no doubts that we'll come through all of this with flying colors. I know I have three minutes, I have one minute left, and if it's okay with you, I'd like to use the last one minute, just for a moment of silence, just to reflect on the things that have happened in the recent past. And also, consider that we have men and women in the military who are stationed out there, one kind of close to my heart. And I know a lot more than I should know about what's happening out there, and I can't speak to it, but just keep our men and women in your thoughts and prayers, as well as everyone out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kona. Is there anyone else? The gentlemen. Thank you for waiting.
Daniel, 527 Old Bridge.
I'm sorry, can you please say?
Daniel, 527 Old Bridge.
I'm sorry, what's your last name, sir?
Daniel Yehel.
Oh, thank you.
Y-A-H-E-L.
Thank you.
I'm echoing my friends here, whom I don't know, on the same concern. So my name is Daniel. I'm a father of two at Hammershold and Churchill, a resident of East Brunswick. I'm an American citizen, and I'm an Israeli, and I've been a teacher most of my life. First of all, thank you, Superintendent Valeski and Mr. Hannis and your team. We were addressing very specific topics in the last few days around the harassment, about the war going on in Israel. That has been taken care of swiftly and in a very good manner, so thank you for that. But it is important for me to read something that I wrote, and some of my friends in the community as well. So, as a result of the war that has erupted in Israel last Saturday morning, I would like to once again emphasize the importance of being aware of the possibility of explosive situations creating conflicts in our town and in our schools. To date, no official announcement has been made denouncing Hamas's serious war crimes. My children did not hear any teachers explain the news to students or take extra precautions. There have been a few incidents of harassment, and all have been reported to the schools and successfully resolved to that point. So thank you for that again. We are concerned that things may spiral out of control. There has been an official warning by the Israeli government that tomorrow will be a global jihad day. Additionally, social media is a hive of activity, and we see it every second. We asked the Board of Education for a formal announcement concerning zero tolerance of We asked teachers and expect teachers to explain the situations in the classrooms. We ask for a specific focus to social media, especially with messages that might lead to students taking action. And obviously, hope tomorrow will be safe as well. But just sharing our concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Daniel. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the board this evening? No? Okay. Then I'm going to close the public portion. I would, if you don't mind.
Okay. I understand the concerns that were expressed tonight. We have been working tirelessly since Sunday to prepare for the opening of school on Monday. We reached out to our teaching staff, we reached out to the administrators. We have always been a school district that has promoted We have always been a school district that has promoted acceptance, unity. We have encouraged people to work out their differences, but to have a meaningful dialogue to do that. So we are all saddened by the events that occurred this past weekend. With that, we are leaning on our established policies and procedures. I assure the community that we have a safe school district. We have coordinated with authorities for tomorrow. There is no credible threat that we are aware of tonight. However, we do have procedures and policies, protocols that we have followed throughout the development of our security forces that we will deploy throughout the day tomorrow. We will simply enhance what we do, we will be more vigilant, but the events that are scheduled to occur tonight, homecoming, tomorrow night, we have TGIF at Hammershaw, we have a football game, those events will still occur, they're student experiences, but we intend to have them operate in a very safe environment. We do value every single student, every single family that resides in East Brunswick because it represents the diversity of the fabric of our community. And we're going to utilize every resource at our disposal to ensure that we have a safe learning environment for our students and for the staff. We want everyone to be safe, and we would like our families to be partners in that. So if there are things that families see, if their children see or hear, simply report those to the school at which your child attends, and we will deal with those issues and those situations one by one, as we have this week.
Thank you, Dr. Valeski. Okay. Moving on to our agenda items this evening, may I please have a motion for items one through three on our Board of Education. Moved by Mrs. Becker, seconded by Mr. Corangelo. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Becker, sorry.
Yes, I have a question on item one. Maybe this might be a question for Matt. So this is a plan for safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of service that was announced in 2021. It came out of the pandemic when we were not in person, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
It's a mandated update that must be reviewed and approved by the Board of Education every six months.
It does, and that was one of the requirements because we got the, you see, it's required by the American Rescue Plan. As you know, we got ARP monies as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic to assist in in-person instruction and continuity of services, for example, upgrades to HVACs, et cetera. So because we accepted those funds, had the funds, utilized those funds, we have to do this LEA plan to comply with that.
Correct. Thank you, Matt. Yes, we're very aware of that, and I'm very grateful for the money that was made available to us. We put it to good use. I guess my question is, since it's no longer really about a safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of service, and has become more about how do we provide support for the children and staff who suffered academically, socially, emotionally from the pandemic, and it's hindering their ability to function in school today, is there some kind of, that you know of, and you may not know this, Matt, some kind of a revision planned to not be about return to in-person instruction, but to deal with the fallout of what happened when we didn't have? Again, I may be asking you something that you don't know the answer to.
There is no state or federal legislation right now that is providing additional funds for really the remediation that is required, and I think we've all identified, and Dr. Bowley could speak to this probably a lot better than I, but the remediation efforts are fairly significant.
Yep.
Especially with the elementary school children. They lost a lot from the remote learning during that period. So I mean, I guess those kids are now fifth grade, or going into fifth grade, or fifth or sixth graders. But there's not any additional federal funds. Those monies have not been depleted.
I can also add that we did apply, as you'll see later in the agenda, for the High Impact Tutoring Grant.
Right, right.
So fingers crossed we get that.
Yes, I think, the point I want you to make is, it's desperately needed. Dr. Valeski, I think you talked about during the pandemic that it was going to take three to five years until we really saw the children approaching a level of comfort with their academic and social situations again. And I guess it alarms me. I am grateful, incredibly grateful, for the help we received during the pandemic. I think we need help now, too. I think all school districts, we need funds. We need more programs like that wonderful tutoring that we're going to be voting on in a little while. I believe that was only two grades in the elementary school.
It is two grades, but we can expand.
We have thirteen grades of kids who really need the intervention, whether it's academic, again, social, or emotional. And right now, the only thing we have to rely on is ourselves and funds within our budget. It would be great to think that there might be somebody at the state or the federal level who's thinking in terms of providing a plan for after the safe return, what kind of help do school districts, children, and staff need, and come up with some money for that. I know I'm preaching to the choir. I know nobody's going to say, "No, Vicky, no, they better not give us money."
No.
I just, it frustrates me. And people have said this before, we've all said this. Jeff, I think you said it not too many meetings ago. It's just frustrating.
Yeah. Can I comment? And I appreciate your comments. I'm a little confused. I would say, back when we went out on remote, and the minutes will show, I think the first comment that I had made at the time was the greatest problem or result of what's happening is going to be mental health. I said it that time, and I said it over and over again. And Mrs. Becker, with all due respect, I did ask this board, leadership, to look for ways of appropriations to address this issue, and it's not just the elementary school students coming up. The class of 2020 was severely impacted in every respect, but, I mean, failure to address this then, I like the idea of addressing it now. Quite frankly, I like the idea of addressing this for the next 30 years because I think we learned something, but what I'm saddened that we didn't address it then, and we had the chance to do it, we had board leadership in place, and it never, ever came to the forefront and hit the agenda, and playing cleanup in aisle three, three years after the fact, is a little distressing, and I appreciate your comments, but leadership didn't address it when I asked. I asked for so many meetings in a row. How many meetings? Mr. Sizmore, you can correct me on this, but how many meetings in a row did I state mental health will be the greatest issue? Now, not a political statement, but I do believe, you know, it would be very nice to have an expert up here at some point to really speak to these mental health issues, and if we can't get state and federal funding, I think that is the worst excuse for not figuring out a way to address this issue, now, later, or last year. But I will not use the excuse of lack of funding from the state or federal level to not address mental health issues at all. I won't do it. I can't get there. I'm sorry. That's all my comments.
Laura, can you answer?
I'd like to answer as well. Jeff, everyone knows that mental health is an issue, and it was an issue well before the pandemic, and the pandemic absolutely put things into overdrive. But I have to tell you, I do take exception with you calling out any other members because remember something, we are a nine-member board. We have all been caring about mental health. You have heard Dr. Figaro for all the years, and before you were on the board, Jeff, mental health is not an issue that got here the moment that you took that seat. So respectfully, sir, I will say that we've all been talking about it, we've done our best to be as proactive as we can in an arena where we had no choice but to be reactive because it was unprecedented. So I have to say, for myself, for the other members of the board, for the administrators who are doing their best, we are always looking to do better, but to turn around and to say, "Well, I told you so a couple of years ago, why didn't you do it?" You are a part of this board. Nothing gets done with one, two, three people. It takes five members of the nine-member board to do anything. And I just have to say, I respect your commitment to mental health, as I think most of us, all of us, excuse me, all of us up here have, but for you to start pointing fingers and saying that we should have done something beforehand, when you are part of this board, I think it's very unfair of you, to your fellow board members, and to these administrators that work very, very hard for the needs of these children. So I'm sorry I interrupted Mrs. Becker, and I see Mrs. Goss wants to speak.
I just wanted to just clarify one thing, Jeff. I did not mean to insinuate in any way, shape, or form that I would ever want to use an excuse of a lack of federal or state funding, and I did not mean to... What I was referring to in that sense was I don't understand why we were constantly reviewing and approving a safe return to in-person instruction when we're back and there's other things we need. I do think that we can look back also, Mark brought up before about the initiative, the one-on-one initiative, that we already had in place, so that when the pandemic hit, like a lot of other school districts, we weren't taken unawares and had to scramble to come up with the technology. I believe that under Dr. Magistro, and then under Dr. Valeski and his staff, there had been a lot of measures put into place, not that we rest on our laurels ever, but I think we can see many initiatives that Dr. Valeski and his staff have initiated. Start with the school within the school, the intervention for the kids who we feel might be challenged to graduate high school, a lot of RTI, and I think that this board has been very focused on funding programs to help provide the help that children have had, not just since they came back, but while we were all going through it.
Mrs. Goss, then Mr. Corangelo. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to ping pong. I'm going to ping pong.
I just wanted to say, I've spent, I've lost track, I've spent the last several years as part of the Student Services Committee and Chair, I guess, the last two, and I would object to what you've said, as that we sit in these meetings and we listen to all the stakeholders, and at each and every meeting, Dr. Figaro has discussed the need to expand our services for students, and he has come to this board, I believe, every year and requested more, more of the services offered from ESS. We've put more guidance counselors at Hammershaw, at Hughes now, for the grade realignment, but we have discussed this issue and each year added to the staff to offer services to respond to students for mental health. It has not been a quiet issue with leadership. It has been a very carefully planned and looked at. I've sat through the meetings where he talks about, this is where the need's going to grow, this is where the need is showing to be very pronounced, this is where we suspect we will need more, I'm going to come and ask for this next time around. So I think the leadership has been very sensitive to where we can expand our services and pretty proactive. We have not been sitting with the same number of counselors and the same amount of staff to provide services to the students. It's been increasing every year. Thank you.
I think you answered my question, because where do we go from here, right? So you just basically answered my next question. Really, what are we going to do now, right? So you answered it, so thanks.
Mrs. Reese.
I just want to mention also, it's a previous chair of the Student Services Committee. I hear what you're saying, I understand your concerns, I think your heart is in the right place. We're all on the same team. We want to improve student services for our students. Dr. Figaro and his team, Dr. Valeski, Dr. Bowley, we're all here to help the kids. Nobody is here with any other motives. As you know, we're all volunteers, and it has been a priority that I've seen, I've seen personally, the guidance team that works here, they've averted a lot of disasters. I mean, there's been some issues that, and I'm impressed by how they handle some of these complicated situations. Are there situations that, of course, we can improve? Absolutely. Are there new programs that we can add? Dr. Figaro always is coming up with new things, we come up with new things, Dr. Valeski. We all are looking for new things. Nobody's saying we don't want to improve things for the kids. And I trust me, we are on the same page as you. We want to see more services for the kids, more counselors for the kids. Whenever there's an opportunity, the administration adds. I would say with the situation of us being a public school, we rival some private schools in some of the attention that we provide to kids. Are there things that we could do, you know, add to, or tweak, or make better? I agree with you. There's never, this is, look, suicide is a huge issue, and that's definitely on our minds, and we work with the county, with the state, so I think we're on the same page in that we all mean well for the kids. Nobody's, you know that we have our hearts in the right place. I hope you do, but...
I never said anything relative to that, but I'm sure we all have our hearts in the right place. Thank you for your comments.
Does this warrant a presentation maybe, eventually?
Mr. Sizmore.
Yeah, I was just going to say, prior to all this discussion, I did mention Mr. Winston, you know, when I talked about foresight, and I know he's not the first because other things occurred back in 2000 before I was on the board, but I had mentioned him specifically earlier because I did see him, you know, several times, and this isn't a knock to anybody else, but it's a compliment to Mr. Winston's heart, which is, you know, which is in a good place. And, you know, I do remember the meetings, that's why I mentioned him when I was talking about Dr. Figaro and his presentation before. Jeff was a big advocate for us getting the mental health. So, and yes, I know, we all vote, and we're all part of it, and Admin, I praised you as well, but I just think, you know, behind the gruff sometimes, Mr. Winston, I do see a big heart, and I see how much you care for the kids. So, you know, I want to thank you for your contributions to the board in that regard. So thank you.
Nobody is questioning the size of Mr. Winston's heart. The only thing I took exception to is that we are a board of nine members, and for any one member to take credit for, or to go down the hill of they didn't do, that's not how we work, Mark, and you've been on the board long enough. So all I was saying to Mr. Winston was, I applaud the fact that you have brought this up, but it's happened well before he was on the board, and this will be an issue well after all of us are no longer on the board. So generally, we do things as a board of education. We don't call out one member to say that you have brought something that no one else has done, because if you don't have four other people voting with you, it doesn't exist. And so, as I said, I applaud everything you said about it, Jeff, I just think that to start pointing fingers and trying to make it into something that you alone brought to the board's attention, that's the only thing. As I said, you know, we model the behavior that we want the children to follow. We want to work together, we want to show camaraderie, we don't always have to agree, we have to respect each other, so that's the only thing I've ever asked of you, and as I said, not taking away any of your feelings about mental health, but because you felt the need to point out that you felt other people weren't, I just wanted to clarify that. That was it.
So does this warrant some type of presentation for us? That way the stakeholders can observe what Heather was saying prior?
Absolutely, and if you've noticed, Dr. Figaro, excuse me, has given us many presentations. So we're constantly having presentations, which is wonderful.
There's one on the website.
If I may, during budget time, I will also be asking for additional funding.
That's right.
So this is, you know, I just want to make sure you realize that, I will have a presentation for you at that time.
And I can validate, he's already come to me asking.
Yeah.
Laura, but... Exactly.
The one, so I do want to make a point at this juncture, just one thing so that the public understands, and this is something we've talked about among the board, but we are seeing significant increases in the needs of students and their families. This is not just a student issue, this is a student and family issue, and the resources that are available to the district to tap into outside of our... And the resources that are available to the district to tap into outside of our own resources and our own supports that we've developed, they are begin, they're becoming limited and, and actually shrinking in some cases. So the, the level of need is increasing, the level of professional support in, in this arena is decreasing. Uh, and we're trying to serve as students closer to the environment in which they're educated. But there's going to be some tough decisions in the future about what our capacity is to do some of those things and, and what the financial impact will be on the district.
I found this conversation.
Enlightening because the fact that Mr. Winston has been bringing things up, maybe we could have as a team addressed his, you know, feelings as they were going on instead of waiting till today to get it out. You know what I'm saying?
Mrs. Becker?
No, I'm not sure.
She doesn't understand what I'm saying.
Oh, no, she.
Well, it was, it, he's been definitely saying things over the years, over the years, over the years. So maybe if Heather or someone else would have just gave him, you know, what he wanted, say, we are doing these extras, just as you said, Heather, we wouldn't be here right now. That's all I'm saying.
That's not what we're about.
Did you have a comment?
I know.
I'm sorry. Is there any other discussion on? Okay, well, the secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Becker. This is, uh, just a clarification, this is on Board of Education, items one through three.
Yes.
Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mr. Cummings.
Yes.
Ms. Goss.
Yes, abstain item two.
Noted. Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
And President Lax.
Yes, motion carries. May I please have a motion for items one through five on curriculum and instruction?
So moved.
Mrs. Becker and Mr. Corangelo. Um, before I ask for discussion, can we schedule, speaking of presentations, um, an update to the FLECK School? I know we always get the enrollment, but I would love to hear.
Absolutely.
Um, how we're doing on that. Any other, no other questions?
I was just going to mention on number three, the Living Voices, you need to have a, a, the explanation of what that is so that folks in the audience, so viewers could understand what's presented.
Dr. Bowley.
Certainly. Um, this is a very valuable program. Some of you have attended and we'd be happy to invite you to attend, uh, these sessions this year as well for eighth and ninth graders in Churchill. It's a combination of a live performance, there's video clips, music. It's really a full experience for the students. It is aligned with their curriculum that they're learning that year. Um, we, we are seeing the civil rights movement and also the Holocaust. Um, we're looking into the seventh graders, bringing them onboard next year. They do study ancient civilization, so it's not completely aligned, but Living Voices is looking to expand their programming. So we look forward to working with them, partnering with them to bring in a program for the seventh graders next year as well. So certainly let Dr. Valeski know if you are interested in attending, we'd be happy to invite you.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Becker.
Yeah, and I know I've brought this up before and I know Barbara and I talked about this. There is somewhere a video. Many, many years ago, uh, two teachers from, at what was Hammerhill Middle School, applied for a grant, uh, and got it to, um, almost produce a documentary of, um, them interviewing Holocaust survivors. It was, I was privileged to have a child in, in that school at the time, be able to see it. It was incredible. What, not just what the children learned about the Holocaust, but what they learned about empathy and humanity for everyone. I'm sorry, it just chokes me up to even think about it. It wasn't, it was an incredible, uh, video. And I, I know years ago, we had talked about the fact that it was somewhere. And I remember Barbara saying to me, I'd love to see it. I just don't remember, I, I remember who the teachers were. They're no longer, uh, they've retired from our district. But, um, it would be great to maybe try and find that because it would be something that could be shared every class. It was, it was really an incredible effort.
Dr. Bowley, I have a question about, um, the centage learning. So we're going to be piloting the program. We get it for free, the web portion of it.
Mm-hmm. The online resources.
But we didn't have, because it said we put it in the budget if we had the funds. So we didn't.
We didn't have, we didn't, there were budgetary restrictions last year, so this year we'll.
So we're going to have it for free for this year. What happens next year?
We'll be purchasing.
We will be, and we'll find the funds. We're not going to dangle this and get everyone, okay, thank you.
There'll be decisions that will have to be made on the budget.
We're finding out all these asks before the song.
We had other, we had other, uh.
I got nothing.
Uh, Lou took off his glasses. He got very serious.
Scrooge.
All right. Is there any other discussion on one through five? Okay, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, moving us on to facilities. May I please have a motion for items one and two on facilities this evening? Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Corangelo. Is there any discussion? Mr. Hong.
So for, uh, for item number one, so I realized that, uh, during this bid, there's additional charge for the, uh, construction container. So my question is, so when the repair contractor or construction contractor was awarded, are all those solid waste should be included or we do the solid removal for them?
No, no, no. This is related to, um, our regular trash removal and recycling in the district. Uh, through, uh, the end of this calendar year, the services are provided, uh, through the township. Uh, the township notified the district, um, last spring, I believe. Yes. Uh, that, um, the township would no longer be providing, um, those services to the district. So we budgeted funds to pay for trash and recycling services. This is for all of our buildings.
Okay.
So this has, doesn't have anything to do with, with construction or contractors.
This is as construction container, but same here.
Oh, well, they're container services.
Yep.
Um, but, um, uh, in terms of, um, budgetary impact, I will note that, um, we have budgeted $100,000 in this bid, uh, is coming in in year one at just a bit above that. I forget what the exact dollar amount is. I don't, let's see, uh, one, uh, it's about $12,000 or $13,000 above budget. Will make up the difference, but, um, it's close to what we had, I'll set aside.
So we were getting it free from the township and now we're paying for it?
Well, I wouldn't call it free. We weren't paying for it. It was being paid out of the township's budget.
Right.
Uh, the town is no longer providing that service. It's now coming out of our budget.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Reese.
Yeah, also a question about number one. Will we have containers for recycling and for garbage and it will be clear for all the schools so that they know what's what?
That's what we have now.
Which we do, but I, it's a new vendor, so.
It's actually the same vendor.
Oh, is it the same vendor?
Yes.
Okay, so we're all.
It's the same, it's the same company that's providing.
It's not going to be any changes.
It's the same company that provides services now through a contract with the township.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, Laura.
Yes, Mrs. Becker.
Um, when, Bernie, when you were just giving the explanation about how it was coming out of the township's budget, now it's coming out of our budget. Um, I'm not going to say this right, so I'm going to ask you to, to translate for me, say it better, but I think it's important for the public to know that, um, it doesn't matter whose budgets it's, it's in, that the taxpayers pay for it. Um, it, am I saying that correctly?
True. And that's why a moment ago, when Mr. Corangelo had, had indicated we were getting it for free, it really wasn't free. The taxpayers were still paying for it.
That's what I mean, so.
It's a different pocket.
It's not, so it's in the township's budget, the taxpayers are still paying for it. Now it's in our budget, the taxpayers are still paying for it.
That's correct.
But it takes away from some of our budget.
Seems like they're.
It does. Hang on. It takes away from some of our budget.
Yes, absolutely.
But it's, it's, moving it to our budget doesn't diminish or increase the taxes. It's, we're still paying for it.
I understand that. I, I understand that.
Yeah, I know. Mark, we've talked about this, but maybe you could think of a better way than I'm saying it.
Well, if, if I can for a moment, let me just put in, into context to a discussion that we, was just happening just a few minutes ago. That's $100,000 that we've had to budget for trash removal services that we weren't previously budgeting, that could be or could have been going to mental health services. Or teacher, or anything else. Or teacher.
That's my point.
Or something else.
So I think that was Mr. Corangelo's point. Corangelo's point, of course, it all comes from the same tax.
Budget impact.
But, but it comes from, it changes the availability of resources within the district.
That's correct.
So in essence, before, from a budgetary standpoint, his comment of it being, put in parentheses, free, is not so inaccurate. I mean, it was being covered, which would have allowed the funding for, let's use your words, mental health. All right? So, so I, I, Scrooge, I think you're absolutely right. And, and I don't think you should try to spin it any differently.
Thank you.
So, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep it to the, to the garbage disposal, but there are other things that we had talked about. And this isn't a knock on the mayor and council, this isn't a knock on our administration, but as a town, we need to look at, because I don't, I don't think it's as simple math as which side of the fence it falls on. There's other options, like it might be cheaper on our side of the fence, it might be cheaper on their side of the fence. It might be cheaper to combine both township and Board of Education for something like this, for garbage disposal, to get a discounted rate as a larger customer. So I think the conversation, and, you know, we've had conversations, but I think there needs to be more conversations with the township. How do we affect the bottom line, whether whose side of the budget's on, uh, for the, for the taxpayers at the township? Who can get it, who can get it for the, the service at the reduced rate? And like I said, a lot of things, the more things we can combine as a township and a Board of Education, I think we're going to, uh, save money for the taxpayers in the long run.
Thank you.
That, that was brilliant. Brilliant. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings, sorry.
One more, uh, point on that. I'm, uh, I'm going to plant a seed for future thinking here as well, but about, I think, eight to 10 years ago, I visited this beautiful digester at Kane University. I don't know if anybody has seen that, but they were taking all of the compostable waste from their campus and turning it into pretty incredible nutrient-rich soil, uh, and saving a whole heck of a lot of money and doing good things by the community and for the earth. So, uh, super cool project. We worked on that. I did some trainings, actually, in the last town I lived in with some elementary school students for composting in the classroom. It can get a little messy, uh, it can get a little dirty, but it also can be done well and can be a really, really cool, uh, enriching, um, prospect for our community as well. So in, in the light of, uh, you know, thinking forward, I think that's something that would be interesting to explore as we continue to move forward.
Thinking Tide Pod sponsor.
What's that?
I'm thinking a Tide Pod sponsor there with the message. That's what we could pay for.
Tim's going to come in.
Right.
No, it's, it's a global approach.
Uh, is there any other discussion? This is a voice vote. I know, look at you, have no faith. All those in favor?
I'm sorry?
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion, I know I was teasing Bernie, Vicki, sorry. Um, may I please have a motion for items one through eight on financial services this evening? Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Corangelo, as usual. Is there any discussion?
I think I do.
Mr. Cummings.
Sorry, I'm, I keep getting lost, but I'm, I'm catching up here. Financial, so, um, I wanted to give a shout, this is where the central elementary PTA, they're under here, I believe, right?
Um, yes, item four.
Awesome, awesome. I saw that and I was just so enthused by, uh, that effort. I want to give a shout out to that team. The PTAs are incredible groups of people. They do amazing work in each of our schools and, and they work tirelessly, you know, in addition to all the other things that they have going on in their lives. But the fact that they raised this money to put in these two water billet, water bottle filling stations, huh, I'm with them. I'm going to go over there and try the water and see how it tastes. Um, I just think it's super great. I, I think they should really be so proud of their efforts and I'd love to know, uh, does that exist in our other schools? Are we, you know, are we providing students across the district with that opportunity?
The answer is yes, yeah. We, we have at every school.
Awesome.
Yes.
Oh, every school, that's great.
Yes. I believe every school currently has, um, at least one refillable station. And we're currently expanding, so we've, we've, we will have offers of, of, you know, board facilities, building grounds meeting, that will probably introduce, um, a couple more.
That's great. That's great. Mr. Hong.
So, uh, comments about item number five, the high-impact tutoring grant. So I'm on the Board of Director for NJASBA, so we lobbied with DOE for $300 million, but fair unfortunately, we end up with less than 52, 52 million dollars. So we all know that our student got bigger impact by the pandemic. We have, after two years, we have not get back to the same level, pre-pandemic level. So my question for this, uh, for our, uh, school district is, what's our plan to use this $460,000 for, to help our third and fourth grader?
Um, you do have a plan outlined, but this is just approving the submission of the grant application. We haven't received approval yet, but we do have a plan developed and ready to go.
So what's the anticipated approval date?
I don't know. I've been asking, uh, our representative at the state level and they're just reviewing applications at this time. I don't know when they'll announce approval. Do you, Matt?
No, no, I do not. I have, it's, it's taking longer than people anticipated, but I think they're, what I heard is they're hopeful to do it, um, after the first of the year, so they can start doing it in the, you know, in the spring.
So let's take advantage of this great opportunity to help our third and fourth grader. Of course, we need more money for other grades, but this is for.
Yeah, it is. That's what we're applying for. That's exactly what this just, just sort of form of.
That's all, that's all that's available right now.
Right, but we are taking advantage.
So if we could, once, once we receive funding and we implement the high-impact tutoring, we can come back and give the board a presentation of the implementation of the plan and where we're starting to see results or where we see issues that, you know, for the future.
Great, Mrs. Becker.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, thank you to, to Tim for giving a shout out to the PTAs. I always like an opportunity to, um, you've got a couple of former PTA presidents up here, but all, almost all of us as parents have been involved with the PTAs and we know all the work they do for the schools and we know the money they raise. In a perfect world, they wouldn't have to be a fundraising arm, so to speak, but, um, funding or lack thereof are priorities. Um, the work they do is just incredible. And not only does it boost the morale of the staff, the children, the administration, but it provides so many important things. So thanks for recognizing them. Good. Thank you.
Okay, well, the secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Cummings.
Yes.
Ms. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hung.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
And President Lacks.
Yes, motion carries. May I please have a motion for items one and two under human resources?
Someone.
Waiting for Mark.
Second.
Vicky and Mark. Tim, do anything, sorry, sorry, Tim.
Let's get the next one.
Aw. It was Vicky and Mark.
No.
Okay, I'm Vicky and Tim, I'm sorry, Vicky and Tim. I'm sorry, okay. Is there any discussion?
Just a reminder, there wasn't a dendum that was sent out.
Yes, but it's on here.
It is.
See, yeah, look at Bernie. All right, will you please call the roll then?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now?
Now.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mr. Cummings.
Yes.
Ms. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hung.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Lacks.
Yes, motion carries. May I please have a motion for staff development, items one and two this evening?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, look at that. Now it's Mr. Corangelo and then Mrs. Becker. Is there any discussion on staff development this evening? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, extensions, sorry, motion carries, leading us to student services, items one through nine this evening. May I please have a motion? So moved by Mrs. Gwass, second by Mr. Cummings. Is there any discussion? No, I believe this is a roll call voted. Well, then, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mr. Cummings.
Yes.
Ms. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hung.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Lacks.
Yes, motion carries, leaving us to our one item under transportation services this evening.
Someone.
Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Corangelo. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries, bringing us to new and or old business committee reports, information items for the good of the cause for the board.
I have something.
Mr. Corangelo.
I wanted to know where. I wanted to know where we are with the soccer field and lacrosse field. Since we've knocked down the trees, it's been quite a few months, so I would just like an update.
It has been.
Oh, yeah, the softball.
Softball and field hockey complex, yes. So the plan is out to bid. We will be opening bids next month. I don't remember the exact date. I think it's around the ninth of November is the anticipated bid opening date.
Will we have any playing on any fields over there by next year?
I can't tell you that right now. Once we, let's talk a little bit about process on this.
Sure.
So if we have a successful bid and it comes to the board for award, and when I say successful bid, that it's within the monies that we have available. Once that occurs and the board makes the award, we will give the contractor a notice to proceed. And then we'll have a kickoff meeting shortly after that. And one of the things that the contractor will need to provide is a schedule that gives us timelines and what the key elements are for various milestones. At that point in time, we'll be able to have a conversation about what's the projection for when these fields would be completed.
Will there be an ad hoc committee regarding the setup of the fields or not?
The design is completed.
Already done.
Is there any way we could view that or?
Absolutely. Yes.
Am I correct in saying that there's some grass growing somewhere near the football area or something? Isn't there didn't seed be put down where I complain all the time?
Oh, I I'm not sure.
You're not sure? Yeah, I was little birdie told me.
It's possible.
Yeah. I've been bitching for years now. I just want that area to be more bear-like.
The area that you're talking about, just so the rest of the board and the public is familiar, it is the area into the high school stadium. When you go in from the main entry gates to the homeside stands. The problem with that grassy area is that no one follows the path. It is a, you know, people take the shortest route, which is right across the grass.
Well, I'm also.
Which kills the grass and is absolutely almost impossible to maintain.
Ms. Gwass mentioned that last time when I brought it up, but I think it needs to be paved. I think we could do something with that little memorial there. I have so many ideas I brought to you guys.
So there are a lot of.
But at least there's some grass starting to grow.
Right, and and issues with paving, you know, it's not so easy to just pave because because there are environmental issues that have to come be taken into consideration.
Gotcha.
Because the DEP, the Freehold Soils Conservation District, they're concerned with impervious surfaces.
Yeah.
So if we are interfering with water retention seepage into the ground, they want to know what's the percentage of impervious surface on the site, which is the entire high school site, before we can go ahead and do any kind of paving.
And that's expensive.
So it's a little more complicated.
I'm not going to stop.
I understand. I just wanted to make sure that you had that information.
Are you one? Mr. Hung.
So it's very late. I will make my statement very short. We already gave enough credit to Dr. Velasquez and our principals. I'm going to give Dr. Velasquez additional credit. I'm going to tell you why. We had a very good curriculum committee meeting, same Dr. Bowley and 35 committee members. In that meeting, Dr. Hope Paluso gave very important presentation AI guidance. So AI is here. AI is impacting our teaching, our learning. How can we guide our teachers teach while use AI? And how can we guide our student learn with AI in a right way? So if you, maybe some people know that we have chat GPT lawyers. The AI just generated all kind of false citation. The case was never there, but that lawyer used it in the in his memo. How, I'm sure some student, at least my son, is using for homework. Many students are using for the homework, and I believe teachers are using in their teaching. How can we guide our teachers and our students to use this to face this new challenge? So Dr. Velasquez foresight put our school district one step ahead of all other school district. I called NJASBA. Nobody knows about this guidance, were the first. So that's why I want to give Victor additional.
Well, I, I, Mr. Hung, I think your your accolades are misguided. Dr. Bowley and her team worked on this process and identify and the board approved the position that Dr. Paluso occupies. We we have been working for a number of years to support our teachers in technological delivery of instruction. AI is here to stay, and we have to figure out how we're going to use AI in the conduction of instruction, how we're going to allow students to use it in the performance of their their daily academic research. And so if we can figure that out, there's going to be challenges because AI is is a learning language and it's going to learn very quickly. And no one really understands what its capacity is. But we better embrace it rather than try to resist it. So but I'm not the one you should be thanking. It's Dr. Bowley and her team.
So I already, at my at the beginning, I thank Dr. Bowley for this beautiful meeting. So I'd be when this project or this job is done, I would like to, Dr. Paluso, come here, make a presentation to the entire board, to the entire school community. Let them know our school's policy, our guidance to our students, to our teacher and to our parents too. And, you know, this is a beautiful job to be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sizmar.
I got a couple of things. First of all, it's not the most exciting committee sometimes, but it's policy. But it might be one of the most important. I mean, this is, you know, what's what's written down. This is how we do this, how we operate. This is what we refer to. I want to thank Mr. Juliana. A lot of thanks are going around tonight, but he turned around the minutes. When he presents us with a packet, he explains the need for the policies because they're lengthy, sometimes 60 pages and stuff, and and he really breaks it down. Two of the highlights I just want to talk about. We are going to administration is going to help work on a new voting procedure when we're bringing on a new board member, just to clarify things and clean it up and 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 make it a more seamless process when we do the important task of of bringing on a new member to the board. And the other one, I had asked for this to be added to the discussion. And in the meantime, the union is going to be talking to administrations about Regulation 1642.01 sick leave. It's a new law that was, I'll say, given to us from the state in July, and that's a tough time for such an important topic. So I like the fact that administration is sitting down with with the union representation. And together, I think, you know, they're going to come up with something to present back to the board to to deal with this. You know, sometimes when these laws come down, they come down so quick. They put words in there, the state doesn't define them, and it it takes a little bit of while to meet things out. And, you know, I'm quite confident in the end of that, that we will come together on that. So that was an important part of the policy meeting. The other committee I I'm chair of is security. I never talk about it, and that's for a reason. I can only say, you know, Dr. Velasquez, you put it very eloquently, what we do behind the scenes. And that's, you know, that's why I don't give reports on that. And it's it's hard for me to say, you know, have faith in us, but have faith in us. I mean, you know, we, it's on our minds all the time. I get choked up when I think about it, the security of the kids every day. But I know the team that's in place from everybody involved, not just security officers, not just retired law enforcement, our law enforcement that's on the ground every day that I used to serve with. There's a lot going on behind the scenes and always concerned, but very confident with the abilities of the district to protect our children. And that's the two things I have for today, so thank you.
Thank you.
I I remembered several years ago, once there Florida school shooting, the same night the the board, at that time, I was on the board, we made the decision to arm our SSOS. So we'll always keep our students' safety in our heart. And what we did and we will do so many things to protect our children, our community, to provide our student the most comfortable learning environment, to provide our teachers the safest teaching environment. That's why I here, we are volunteer, but we take everything very serious.
Well said, thank you.
President Lacks, can you say one thing?
Absolutely.
I represent districts throughout the state, and I can tell you that throughout the state, from far up north to far down south, this district is basically the the model that people want to try to emulate. You 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 guys have a security force that are really, let's, they're all retired law enforcement.
And give a shout out to Mr. Natalie.
Yeah, I mean, it's incredible. It's basically you you actually have in East Brunswick, you have two police forces. You have your police force at the municipality, and then you have one of the most robust security forces I've ever seen, more bigger than any other place in the state, including urban school districts. So and I mean, district after district, they asked me, oh, you represent East Brunswick. How did they do that? I said, they've been planning on this. This was years in the making. I mean, I think you started discussing it with Dr. Magistro when you when you were first on. I mean, this is.
Paul is the, Natalie is the king, the architect of the Dr. Magistro back before Columbia.
And it's and it's something that Paul continues to work on over and over again and enhance. But I just think that from from my perspective, I'm not a board member, I'm not a member of your community, but, you know, the community should take great pride in in having a, probably the most robust security system I've ever seen in any school district in New Jersey.
Thank you. And other board members contribute as well.
Oh, everyone, I mean, board members, you know what? None of this would happen but for the board committing the funds to do it. This is not a cheap undertaking, but you guys prioritize school security for both the students and the staff and visitors. And it's, you know, it's unbelievable. When you just go into the vestibule and you see the the video footages that you have all over the building, it's incredible, so.
Mrs. Becker.
Again, Mark, thanks for bringing up all the efforts. We were echoing them. This it started probably before Dr. Magistra. But I can remember the first time we scheduled lockdown drills. It was so scary for everybody, the staff, the students, the parents and the board, the administration, because we wanted it to become as commonplace as a fire drill. You know, when the kids, when a fire drill happens, at this point, by the time the kids get into, how much older church, all the high school, they've done it every year. It's just by rote, I believe is the term. We wanted it to become so commonplace that, God forbid, we needed to do it for real. The children would just automatically be able to step into the process. And it's 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 been incredible to watch. And I think we talked about it at another meeting, that original disaster plan, if you will, that Joanne and her staff had come up with, it was the yellow.
The flip chart.
Flip chart. It was like, pick a scenario, any scenario, any disaster, natural or otherwise. And there was a whole plan for the whole thing, and it was a yellow flip chart. It was given out to all the board members, and it was used. Somebody at the state level did a televised presentation and and was actually holding it in in their hand. It was a a matter of great pride for the East Brunswick security. Thanks for mentioning it.
Mrs. Reese.
Thank you.
Sorry, I wasn't looking at the.
I just wanted to build on what Mr. Hung said about the AI guidelines because, you know, I was in the meeting also, and I think it's a, you know, kudos again to the to the team, Dr. Bowley and Dr. Paluso, Dr. Velasquez and all who worked on it because a lot of kids are nervous to use AI. They think they're cheating, and it gives them stress and they anxious about it. And like Dr. Velasquez said, AI is here to stay. And I I think we also talked about coding club and that we have a two, we have such a demand that we have to have two sections of the coding club. Maybe this is an area that we expand into, how to use AI. It could be a club. How do we use AI to help with school? How do we use AI in the future? How do we use AI in our life? It it, you know, we were just talking here in the board, and we said, we don't even know in 20 years, what are we going to be? What are the jobs going to be? What are what's the education going to be like? So the fact that you're thinking about this now, we thank you. And and it's it's a it's definitely a a whole new world, many ways, some good, some bad. But the AI is here to stay. And we, if our kids are going to be competitive in a global economy, they need to know how to use AI and not be afraid of it and think of it as something I doing wrong. So it's a tool and we we can master it, so thank you.
Yeah, I think I think Joyce and your staff have done a terrific job starting this whole thing. And I bet you, knowing you, you've got some great ideas about taking it to to next level. So we'll we'll really look forward to hearing that.
Okay, good meeting. I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Becker, Mr. Corangelo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a good night.